...of different levels of input for all staff to participate in. And so when staff appoint or recommend your student, your teachers that serve on your leadership teams, your teachers, your classified staff that sit on the school site councils, those folks are looking at those plans, I'm hoping, because that's their essence of their role on the school site council, is to look at their school plan, to look at those allocations, to look at the ways that BEST utilizes those resources that are given to those schools within the context of that school. Because the, you know, some of the things that we have are, may not fit for every single school. Our schools look different. They're different. They're made up of different student populations, their achievement levels are different, and so how that looks at different sites is different. So I would just say be cognizant that there are multiple opportunities for input, not just one. Not one where we call it an L cap stakeholder input session, but many opportunities, because our district goals, the three that I cited, the three that Lori cited, they are aligned to our school plans. And we're not trying to make a plan on top of another plan on top of another plan. I'm looking for alignment within plans, and then how do we support those with all of the resources from which we have. But we will also look at your comments and see where those opportunities present themselves. Thank you.
I also want to add, in terms of input, we are, we don't have it up on our website or have we sent it to teachers or classified staff yet, but we will be doing an electronic digital survey that will be available to all stakeholders. So whether you can-
Classified answer to the question.
It'll be on our website. And that will be one of the stakeholder groups that you can indicate you belong to, whether you're a community teacher, administrator, classified staff, that will be there. Because even if we scheduled five meetings, there would always be someone who didn't attend. Okay?
I'm sorry. Actually, a question. So I wanted to change the subject for a moment. I had a question about one of those slides of the month, the last presentation, and I know you've already switched it to the other one. But actually, this might be easier. So regarding suspensions, and forgive my ignorance, but it's apparent, I'm trying to understand your role. But the, the number of suspensions at each school?
Yes. This chart, this one?
Yeah, that's the one. Yeah, I didn't get a chance to look at it all, all of it is up on the screen, but now that I'm looking at Al Gatlin and Oralwood and University Park at the bottom, there's these huge increases in the number of suspensions. This has to do with like disciplinary actions against children or misbehavior, is that correct?
Yes, it's a school suspension.
So if you're seeing a trend in the number of suspensions really increasing from the last school year, are any additional resources being allocated in a very fluid way to respond to? That was still my only question. It just looks concerning as well.
Well, Mr. Gordon, you named three schools that I highlighted, so I will definitely ask questions. I think my bigger question is around this, are these, and Virginia's not here to answer this, but if anybody knows the answer to the question, are these number of days of suspension, or are they actually the number of suspensions?
The days, that's what was reported to me by Virginia. I can't add some clarification.
Well, the reason I'm asking that question is because that, if you give a one-day suspension versus giving a five to more than five-day suspension, those days can add up very quickly. So the severity of the incident would be dependent upon that. And I can say, for one of the schools at least, that there's been a change in, there's been, there's been special programs added to one of those sites that is definitely, I mean, again, I have to look at those, really, those numbers much more closely, but I'm going to make an assumption that that plays into it, because we were having a lot of crises happening at one of those sites that involved special programs. And so again, a spike in those, in those suspensions may be of how we assign special programs to a certain site. And that in turn, so yeah, I'd have to just aggregate this data to really figure out what's going on.
So those are actually days, not individual suspensions?
They're days. That's what I'm hearing. Are they days? David, you're shaking, I mean, Daniel, you're shaking your head. Okay. If you're going to address the board, would you please come up to the podium?
Good evening, board members. I'm Daniel Lee, Principal, University Park. One of the questions this gentleman was asking about is resource services and things like that. When you look at those numbers, is there situations where several students who have reached what we call Tier Three components of behavior, they have been receiving extensive services from, for example, several of our students are now receiving one-on-one counseling from our Monterey County Negro Health, so that's helped that situation in school too. And, you know, again, until prior years, this was, this year's been really good in having our home for sixes home from two days a week, along with having a therapist from MSBH, along with having a behavioral specialist, where we're now incorporating a lot of these behavioral support plans within the classroom twelve-two. I can obviously say, you know, when I look at that number, yes, it has spiked. Several of those students were not attendance at our school last year, but now, you know, we are working with the families and with the child, and we have seen increase, or decrease in referrals and increase in attendance and participation from the child as well. So that's helped a lot.
Thank you.
I hope I answered your question. Yes, thank you, Daniel.
Any questions in the board?
I just want to briefly say I can address why Laurel was kind of, it was a change of administration, so the support that we got.
Mrs. Sanders is going to continue with her next presentation.
And I have another friend who will be joining me a little bit later, Mr. Stratton. Different power point. So this is on last, last board meeting, I presented on certificated professional development, and I come back to you to present some information about what we've done this year with classified professional development. Just reminding you again, I'm going to speak for educational services. These are the, this is the professional development to classified staff that come under the programs that Ed Services operates, and those are academic programs, but also under school culture and climate, the various programs that we have up there. And so we have classified staff that work directly with students in language arts and in special education, and that are district funded, and then we are all classified, non-instructional aides or paraprofessionals, participate in various programs such as PBIS, Restorative Justice in the Schools, and our Olvea's Anti-Bullying Program, which we'll get to in a little bit. I'm first going to talk about our district staff development days that we had. Our first day back in August 10th, we did invite IAs to attend a Eureka Math Overview with our consultant Linda Dilcher, who you've met. And then after that, in the afternoon, we had a PBIS training. We invited all classified, and they were compensated for both, with Sandy Fuerte, our program manager for school culture and climate. And so that was offered by Ed Services. I know there was more from the business and physical services folks. On our second staff development day, we had another training for classified staff on PBIS, and then BEST did a training for recess and playworks supervisors, and also our district nurse provided, used that time for CPR and first aid training for her health aides staff. On the second day at services, the third, excuse me, professional development day, we provided again another playworks training, and the BEST program had BEST Practices for BEST training. In addition to that, then, going back before school started, and then during the year, we've been providing ongoing training for all of our instructional aides in Tier Two interventions, including a full day before school, after school, and then during vacation, winter break, we had AM, PM sessions on January 6th for our IAs. We had during those different days, 56 classified staff attended. But one of the real important things that we added this year was a teacher on special assignment for primary intervention who goes to the sites and works with the IAs. She provides-
IAs?
Oh, I'm sorry. Instructional assistant, also known as a paraprofessional. And Jean Felix is this particular teacher on special assignment, and she is out at sites every day. And she has got out of the log, and she has made 178 visits to the site so far this year, averaging 11 to 19. And I've heard from our instructional assistants, and I've heard from our principals, that it's really, really assisted. So our certificated staff is not only getting instructional coaching or academic coaching, so are our instructional aides. And then, of course, again, with our school culture and climate, we have trainings for positive behavior interventions and supports, and we have 13 schools that are participating, advancing in their trainings, and those trainings involve sending site leadership teams, and on the various leadership teams, they also include classified that attend. We did do one Restorative Justice in the Schools training, and we had five classified attend in October. We're doing another training in May, and we invite all classified. If it isn't during their workday, then they are compensated for coming. This year, we had two additional schools join, Olvea's, Roosevelt, and Loja Vista. And in that anti-bullying program, the entire site is trained, and so 28 of their classified staff, from custodians to new supervisors to secretaries, health aides, librarians, everyone. And then, of course, before school started, we also had more playworks, where we really do love this program, training for classified. Our special education department has done their own training for their classified staff. They have instructional aides that work in their special day classes in their resource classrooms, providing direct services to students. And they also have one-on-one supervisors with students who have challenging behaviors, and they help with redirecting them. So they had, they had five different days of training. The October 2nd was on one of our district-wide days, and they've had great success with this. And I understand on the October 2nd, that was a side-by-side training with their certificated colleagues, and that was very well received. And in our BEST program, they've had their own series of professional development with their after-school, they're called HASSIS, which stands for homework and, Mary, homework?
Homework, supervisory activities.
Thank you, Mary. And so, and there's quite a big team of them. I did not, by the time I had to turn this in, I didn't have the date yet on how many had attended the March 3rd training. Okay. And then Jerry has a whole slew of things that have been going on in his various departments.
Mr. President, trustees, Superintendent Martinez. I'll just briefly go over some of the trainings we do, and a lot more training is integrated into the daily operations. For transportation, beginning of the year, we'll get our drivers in for bus inspection, pre-op, post-op, filling out the forms, what to do if there's an issue, practice doing their run, so we can see what the timing is of that. And then October, 31 August, and then again in October, we had professional training days, and there were two big items that we needed to get done. Couldn't do it all at once, but mandated reporting, which is a requirement, and then bloodborne pathogens, which is also critical, how you handle that and how you clean it up. So, next slide, please.
Oh, do you want me to do it for you?
Hey, look, I was fast this time. There we go. For food, for food service, we start with safety orientation on, on our equipment. We go on, again, mandated reporting and bloodborne pathogens, safe lifting. We've had a slew of injuries in our food service department, so we're looking at other safety tips that we can integrate into training. Cleanliness, and our facilities are clean. We had someone slip on a piece of lettuce, and it's a workers' comp thing. Our workers' comp has gone up significantly this year, and we need to do a better job of that, and we'll keep integrating those safety tips from our workers' comp provider.
You go back to the slide you mentioned, custodian.
I didn't. Thank you. Custodians, again, we have a staff development day with mandated reporting, bloodborne pathogens. We did makeups to try to get everyone, we're still working on it. We have job likes every month, and we'll integrate safety talks into that. We also provide the five-minute trainings that we get from the Monterey Educational Risk Management Authority, that's the JPA that handles our workers' comp, and we forward those out now to the head custodians. Ladder safety is one of them, they just vary by month. Transportation, I think I've already covered. Somewhere in here, I don't know, I missed the folder, there we go. Food, this is the stuff, food service, we already did, next one? I'm going to leave this alone. My thumb is not that bad. Again, mandated reporting, bloodborne pathogens, makeup for the same thing. We have safety meetings every month in our maintenance department, and then my team leads that have their team members under them will do tailgate opportunity training. Every other month, I go down, we inspect the vehicles, we talk safety on the vehicles, we look at windshield wipers, we look at lights, turn signals, tires, anything that's not proper, we get fixed, so we're safe on the road. We do our job. Isn't that, is it for me?
Okay, so that's kind of a synopsis of some of the trainings that happened for our classified staff, are there any questions?
For next year, and I'm thinking mostly in the transportation, custodial, food service departments, is there any training plan for PBIS? Because those people all work directly with students, and I would think they would want to incorporate some of those same, so everybody's doing the same thing.
Right, and they are invited. Actually, last year, we did one of our professional development days for certificated. We did the day, and we specifically invited all the transportation and all food service. Because you're out of, you're right, they did restorative justice, and they have done PBIS, they're key people on the front lines interacting with our students. And so, yes, there are trainings for them where they're invited to, if it's not in their school, their workday.
Yeah, well, I was thinking about, you know, your district-wide staff development days, that perhaps that could be included so that they not have to attend, you know, as an invitation, but that would, I think it's something really important, the PBIS model, and I think it only works as well as all the people that are involved. So if you leave a group out, you know, it's a key component to maybe if successful or not.
One of the, one of the elements that we have to consider is days, the contractor negotiating. And so that is why many of those are voluntary, and, but as you can see, I think we have participation from our classified staff, I think they're willing to make that happen, and we're looking for those opportunities. So depending on their contracted days and negotiated element within those staff development is, so that also that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the district for providing us with this classified staff development plan. I would like to take this opportunity to discuss a few points. Based on the plan that was just presented, classified dependence is low, numbers like we saw by the Pennies, 14, and there was a number of 56. Now, how many classified are in our district? There's almost 400, if you ever take a few. And based on that information, if you added up all of those attendees, you know, there's a little over 200, probably some of those are duplicates that have attended some type of training or conference or meeting. And we ask ourselves, why is it that there's low attendance for classified? August 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 7th are non-workdays for classified employees. How were the classified employees notified? We're not sure. August 10th, 31st, and October 2nd were staff development days for certificated staff, and are non-workdays for classified. Therefore, if by chance a department had a meeting or training, it invited the limited number of classifieds. For example, there on the 31st, there was a CPR first aid, but just a select group was invited, not all. January 6th and 8th, non-classified workdays. This plan shares that food service, maintenance, custodial have the mandated reporting bloodborne pathogens, but what about the rest of the classified staff? And also reported here that head custodians meet on a monthly basis for an hour, but they didn't tell you classified secretaries also meet on a monthly basis for an hour here at the district office, as well as health aides. They meet on a pretty regular basis. Migrant school community coordinators meet monthly through the Monterey County Office of Education. And you're probably wondering, well, who was left out? We think new supervisors are left out, school librarian, school clerk typist, district office curricular staff, and other classifications. I think that in August, classified did go to trainings. They went voluntarily, and they were compensated. But also, last summer, if you wanted to work as a substitute custodian, you had to go to a training, and you were told you were not going to be paid for it. Well, CCA agreed it, and they're still waiting to get paid for it. That was from August. I really feel that classified are sort of put on the back of the bus when it comes to professional development. Remember the word professional means just that. Let us all get on the bus and start respecting each other and look at our needs as professionals. CCA would like to see the district dedicate more staff development for classified employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Last presentation by Ms. Laurie Santos.
Well, hello again, Superintendent Board Members. I'm here, this is an information item. I will, this is a proposal for how the district should spend its fund for the Educator Effectiveness Block grant. The district has received $620,000, $620,341 in our educator effectiveness block grant. After deducting some funds for indirect costs, that leaves roughly $600,000, $594,162 available specifically for administrative and certificated staff professional development. This cannot be used for classified that provide instructional services. And what we are recommending is that all of this money be set aside for compensation for our staff to attend professional development outside of their regular workday. We have currently three days of professional development in the certificated contract. And with all of the shifts in 21st century teaching and learning, and our changes in our content standards, our teachers really, really need more time for professional development, professional reflection, and collaboration with peers. We can't do what needs to be done in three days. And so this money is to be spent by June 30th, 2018, so we have two years. And so we're proposing, and specifically, it stands for standards-based professional development. This would allow for professional development in mathematics, English language arts, English language development, science, history, social studies, visual performing arts, and/or media education, any of the kinds of things. Any more questions?
I'm behind that. In the packet is the schedule for the five days being proposed for June, which is being negotiated at this time. But I just wasn't sure, is this, is your report saying that this school $594,000 will be spent on this one week, or it's more, I wasn't, and if, if not, then how much are you proposing?
Do you want me to address a question? Well, my understanding is that the five days in June of 2016 are off the table. They're voluntary days, and the side letter that we're looking at is looking at next year. So we are providing this as a draft of what will happen in June, and it'll be a voluntary basis, the teachers will be, you know, attending, so. But the question, that wasn't the answer to your question, I was just talking directly about negotiations.
Right, and so this is, I provided, this is an example, the trainings that this would be used to compensate teachers for. The math standards, the project-based learning, designing some lessons, using content standards with that, the ELD, ELA framework, directly is an introductory training for teachers into our new ELD standards. And so this, this certainly qualifies under that category, it's enumerated in the grant of trainings that qualify to use those funds. And so certainly that, we don't anticipate that five days of training is going to use the entire $594,000. But hopefully, we will have good attendance, and it'll take care of the size of the chunks.
This side of this for information, and we'll be coming to the board to action at our next meeting.
Speaking of action, we're on the action calendar. Mr. B, is the resources?
Good evening, Superintendent Martinez, Chairman of the Board, Deputy Chair, Assistant for Senate, Senator Green, and I have before you tonight the consideration of approval for a multiple-subject provisional internship permit, also under the fifth, for Ellen Capewala. And-
And so, certainly that, we don't anticipate that that five days of training is going to use the entire $594,000. But hopefully, we will have good attendance and it'll take care of the size of the chunks.
Very much.
This side of this for information and we'll be coming for board action at our next meeting.
Speaking of action items, we're on the action calendar. Are there any resources?
Detective Chief Superintendent Martinez, Governor of the Board, Detective Chief Assistant Superintendent, Senator Reson, please. And I have before you tonight the consideration of approval for a multiple-subject provisional internship permit, also known as a PIF, for Alan Kapuaala. And as I mentioned in the past, in the, I think that before you, you're well aware that we're taking a teacher shortage. We made many attempts to fill the position with a fully credential teacher and were not successful. So that leaves us with the next step of applying for a multiple-subject provisional internship permit for Alan Kapuaala. So we're asking the board to approve the PIF for Mr. Alan Kapuaala.
Ready discussion?
Well, I just, how's he doing that?
He's highly recommended by the principal and he's doing as a fifth grade teacher at Al Gavin.
Well, that's good, I think we should do it.
We have a motion of second. Okay, a motion of second to approve the provisional internship permit for Alan Kapuaala. Six A's, folks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Budget passed?
We can get you a little electric chair.
Good evening again, Mr. President, trustees, Superintendent Martinez. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Lona Christiansen's hard work, weekends, nights, beyond belief, putting the second interim together. I think I told you that the first interim was in perfect snapshot and that it was early enough in the year that the data wasn't always consistent. So there were significant changes that happened on a curve between the first interim and the second interim. I'm going to do the 30,000 to 10,000 foot review of the budget and then Lona will get you two wheels down, touch you in the ground with some of the details. Hopefully, do this fast enough that I can get the slides in the right order. I don't know how, but two in a row, I'm on a roll here. So notable transfers, of all, the economy is slowing down. We see that now internationally. I mean, in Japan, they have a negative interest rate on a 10-year bond. Both the Department of Finance and the Legislative Analyst Office, the LAO, have said that we see COLA-only years in the future, starting within two years, I think. And that means with COLA-only, we get a COLA and from the COLA, we have to pay step and column and we have to pay the addit stirs and ers, which is more than the COLA is projected to be. So we actually have negative growth. CBET's growth is gone. Those days of budgeting one to 300, averaging two, all of a sudden, reality hits this year and we are not growing as we were before. Our goal is ADA at 97%, and our sights are not there. The Saturday School is helping and everybody we capture is dollars for us and we need everybody because we need every dollar. I have to apologize. I was taking a tour in airport the last few days to walk my sister down the aisle and marry her since my, get her married. Since my dad had passed away. So revenue is down and it's down because our ADA is down. And statewide, we've got two months now of revenues from the three sources of revenue at state level below projections. So the good times may be ending. Stirs and ers, I'll show you in a chart, they're increasing dramatically. Like a couple of years in the chart, you'll see over a million dollars. Good news is our mixig benefits are relatively stable. Right now, we are, we've increased about $4 million in, God bless you, reserves at mixig. We're trending below projections in terms of the costs. The new surgical benefits they have are just so much cheaper that we're looking really good for dental, vision, and for medical. Our one-time money that we got a huge chunk of is going down and within two years, the only one-time money in that pot, it's really not one-time money, is going to be our lottery money, about a million, four million, five. But the big chunks of money that everyone thought might not be one-time anyway because the governor kept putting them in the pot and he didn't want to increase the revenue limit, we're finally seeing those fade into the sunset. We've got a huge challenge and we're going to need to fund language arts and math adoptions. That's about $4 million. We've got the debt payments and we've got a Q skip of $11 million that we need to put money away to pay. And of course, we'll be paying down our solar note and that, most of that is from the savings of PG&E. While we do that, we've got to maintain and take care of our workforce. You heard earlier about professional development for our classified force as well as our certificated workforce. And then we've got to maintain our facilities and we work hard to do that, considering the age of some of our buildings. And Lori told you earlier that we've got, you know, exemplary status and that's not easy. Every April, we walk through and create about 1,000 to 1,200 work orders and work them down all summer so we're ready for the Williams folks when they come. So we have, the governors may revise and we have no expectation that there'll be any more money. There well, could be less money than we thought with the revenue picture gliding downward now for the last two months. And that's from all sources, capital gains, we have personal income tax, PIT, of course, is the big one, personal income tax. And then the gap funding, we had a small gap funding for next year and then it went way up and it may change again. And school funding in the state of California, believe it or not, you don't know how much money you're going to get for the year until the year is over. That's pretty amazing. I just briefly show you the stirs and ers here and Lona will be on it. You can see, stirs is on the left, those are the annual increases. Then we have ers with the annual increases. And then together, we have in this year, over a million, drops down next year, then it's back up to about a million until the very last year where we think that's about where we're going to top out. And it could change a little, they'll recalibrate based on what they see the cost of providing for retirees is.
Jerry, can you hold on to the, to the stirs and ers increase? Please, for a second.
You know, this one, look, it doesn't work for me. Go ahead.
Right there. Just pointing out on the second row of numbers, the total, that one million, yes. Lona, you want to tell us, or Jerry, you want to, no, total?
This was inflated with the high amount of the settlement we had with SETC. So it is not calibrated with the rest in terms of the glide tapped up, but you also see some significant increases from 88 to 1073, and then it kind of goes up incrementally. But that chunk was partly due to our settlement of $3.1 million and we had to pay stirs on it. We worked with stirs so we could avoid most of the penalties. I'll turn this over to Lona and talk about CBET's first.
Good evening. I wanted to share with you what makes it so hard to guess how many children are coming to school. We usually use historical trends and we use cohort method to calculate the percentage we have of the birth rate in county and a number of other factors. And we have been increasing for the last seven years with an average of about, almost 200 a year. When I did original budget, I assumed 105 more children over the previous year. That did not happen. This was the first year we actually went down by 20 children. I don't feel that's significant enough to show a downward trend, but in using this lower number, it is also flat across the future years. And that could still go either way. But right now, that's where the multiple-year projection is in this budget. But the really, really significant thing is the P2 average daily attendance. This funds all of our money. The LCAP is based, the whole LCFF is all based on this number. And although we had some lofty goals of having 97%, first interim, I used 96.8%. Well, it didn't happen. And as Jerry stated, we're very glad we have this Saturday School with some recovery of this ADA because without it, we'd be even worse. But we're really at a 95.16%. I can't stress enough how important it is to give that message out that we need to have children in the seats both for funding and for their own learning experience. So this was one of the big changes that caused the district, between first and second interim, a loss of about $1.2 million. This is a comparison of just the revenue piece of what was at first interim and what's at second. So your first level here is first interim, then in the middle, you have second, and in the bottom, you have the changes. So what you see is for the first year, the current year, they're in blue, 15, 16, we've got that loss of $1.2 million. And it did come out of the, out of the base funding. Then, so this was, this was the tough year. In January, they lowered the COLA and we had a loss in ADA. So that brought down our numbers for this year. However, the governor increased the gap percentage for next year and that went from like 12.5% up to 49%. So that got us some more money for next year. But remember that the whole target and everything came down across the years because of that ADA, all right? You'll see that the concept of how much money goes into LCAP is based on a formula that takes into consideration not only the number of children, the ABA and the percentages, but it didn't look at how much money you spend each year, the year before. And it bases this in the formula. The LCAP in five years should be at goal and it will be $21 million for a targeted group of students. And that $21 million at that year, you should be spending that full amount. So that means that across these future years, that amount being spent needs to be increased a couple million dollars every year. So that is why you saw a big jump in the LCAP funding. Isn't, it's very necessary if you actually got to your final year and you weren't spending your full amount, you could end up having to take money back out of your base just to feed it into the LCAP plan to make sure that you were doing that correctly. Anyhow, so these are some of the changes you see where you had a loss in your, your target amount went down, you had some increase in your second year out, in your third year out with your base and your LCAP. Okay, Lydia, thanks. So this shows, there's a report that comes out in the SAT software and that's in your, in your packets, it's called a multiple-year projection. And what I did was just take that same form and try to simplify it. I added up groups of different types of expenses to show you where we're at. So what you're not here, let me get this. So you start out with your revenue and this is a combination of base and LCAP and we've got state money. Look what happens with that state money across the years. That's because that's that one-time mandated cost money. So we had 4.5 million this year, next year's about 1.8. And then by the time you get to that third year, all you've got left here is that 1.5 is mostly lottery money that we get. So you see a big loss there. You see this negative number here, that's contributions and encroachment, that's money that's taken from the on-restricted and remember, this whole piece here is all the on-restricted side. We have to speed money into cover transportation, special education, and RMA, which is routine maintenance. And we're required by law to put 3% of all of our expenses into this fund to keep the facilities maintained and working. So that number is used as a constant across, based on this year's estimate. It can easily swing half a million dollars one way or another when you're dealing with special education and self-up. They often don't even make changes until after you close your books and end up falling in a long year. So that's a, but for the sake of comparison, I'll put the same number across so we can get a feel for what's happening down here. So what we have here is another, not quite $3 million, and then it's not much more by this third year. Let's look at expenses. You've got your salary piece. You see that salary go down? That's because, again, you had $2 million of the settlement fell into this category here. $800,000 of it fell down in the next box because it was actually interest payments out, it wasn't in the salary line. So it goes down and then it goes back up again because you've got your step and column for everybody, which ends up being about half a million dollars each year. This future year consists of five additional teachers. A couple for class size reduction because we're not showing growth. And then we are going to be losing our QEIA money, which is funding right now just three teachers with the carryover money. So they will have to be covered out of base. And then it goes back up again here because, again, there's only two more teachers added in over here and then your step and column, yes. Now, here's your expense across. Again, what happened is when your LCAP money went up, the majority of the expenditures were put in this category. It could easily, when the plan is all finalized, that extra money could end up going up in the salaries yet, but that's an unknown factor, so that's there. Now look at your transfers out, that's this line here. At first interim, we had about $2.5 billion going into Fund 56, it's our debt fund. And we also had another million going into Fund 40. That was to pay for Aranda Meadows to get operational for this coming year. It's been reduced all the way down to a million dollars. 50,000 is for the preschool startup at Aranda Elementary. The million dollars is a minimum that we need in the debt fund because in eight years, we have to pay that Q skip. And that is $11 million. And that has to be paid in a five-year period. And if we don't start putting aside at least a million dollars right now, until then, we're not going to have the money, okay? So we put this down to the bare minimum, there's a slight little extra in here, that one's only at a million. So when you take your revenue and you subtract your expense, what do you get? We've got a extra million dollars to be added into our balance. So we had 5.3, add a million in, you're down to 6.3. Where does that money fall? Well, $5,000 has been put in revolving checking account.